...of this meeting of the Atherton Council. Let's rise with a budge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Okay, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Davi and Councilmember McKee than our votes next season. Sorry.
Right.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Whitmer.
Here. Okay, public comments. William.
Good evening, Council. This is your public speaking.
We are all ears.
Thanks for showing up.
All right, I wrote this down this time. Somehow, the Safe, Fast, Reliable, High-Speed Rail Act of 2008 morphed into the Rail Modernization Act of 2012. Somehow, was some backroom dealing by my party without any hearings and all take place over three days prior to the Senate vote. And one of those days was July 4th, so nobody was there. Just to make the port bow work a little better, the Speaker and the Governor threw in $2,000 more of your money, okay, degrees of plan, and buy two very crucial and heretofore committed no votes on that. One that they voted Senator Leland Yee of San Francisco, welcome to the Chinatown Tunnel. And the second one that they bought was Norine Evans of Marin County Smart, Sonoma-Marin Area Rapid Transit. Okay? It only passed by one vote. Senator Semidion, brave as he was, stood up, gave a magnificent speech. I was actually there and indeed convinced no one. The very, very strong and brave person because Senator Semidion is leaving is Senator De Sounier of Concord. He not only voted no, but he looked Darrell Steinberg, the President pro term, in the eye and said, "I know the cost of this," and basically was saying, "You're going to throw me off of the Oversight Committee because I voted no." So the upshot of the new Rail Modernization Act is the attempt to divert funds plus some new monies to the transit agencies. Those funds were originally intended for high-speed rail. And discussions are underway about how to best remedy that grab of funds. The bottom line for the votes of Rich Gordon and Jerry Hill, representatives or about to be representatives, is not the promises to keep the Peninsula at two tracks, but rather the legislative council's ruling that four tracks are completely legal. In short, we prepared for four tracks. I forgot to bring the three tracks and everybody see the Daily Post today. Caltrain said they're going to have three tracks. All right, thank you, Jerry. He had no written agreement. He said, "We have a promise for four tracks, for two tracks," and that's just as good as the paper it's not written on. So why am I not surprised this happened, that our representative sold his hell? The result of the diversion of money for Atherton is now Caltrain thinks it has enough money to vote for. And Teresa has a handout, and let me show you the one there. Under Proposition 1A, there was 950 million of the 9.95 billion, which was set aside for transit and intercity passenger rail. 760 of the 950 were specifically for transit agencies. They do that, the voters voted for that. You see the allocation by the California Transportation Commission of $106 million there. That's completely legal. One may protest it, but it's completely legal. But what you see below it is 600 million, which will come out of Proposition 1A funds, which was only intended to build high-speed rail. They are in the great winking exercise of, "Oh, this is really for high-speed rail," although they really know it's not likely to come in 30, 40, or 50 years. So that is that. It's done. They are on the way. They are even being lampooned today in the Financial Times, a British publication, that they compare. No, I don't care. Second point, I cannot be completely sure, but I'm fairly certain that the group was collecting 1.5 million for the revote rail to put the proposition back on the ballot. That one was sponsored by Senator Doug LaMoffa, that they failed to raise enough money to pay for the signature collectors. So I assume that proposition or that solution is off the table. Strangely enough, the donors from the Peninsula gave more than the farmers in that effort, and the farmers are the ones who are going to suffer first from it. So we now turn our attention, those of us in opposition, to the courts. I know that Councilman Carlson has something he can talk about, so I'll let him talk about it. But there are two environmental lawsuits in the Central Valley likely to come forward. In fact, have already been filed. The Governor, as you may remember, exempted the project from CEQA, backed off when the environmental groups screamed about it. But the environmental community is starting to weaken on that one, and I'm not sure where all that's going. I would not be surprised, given my discussions with the Sierra Club, that they're willing to throw the state under the train because they don't do their homework. They haven't looked at the studies, particularly the one from the University of California and Berkeley's Institute for Transportation Studies, that says if the train is 75 percent full for 70 years, it will break even on a carbon footprint. Only 75 years, it's 75 percent full for 70 years. So that's that. However, the Valley folks are already pursuing a line of lawsuits with the NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act. And they really want to go after that if the Governor exempts from CEQA, because they can't trust the environmental community anymore, and I can't trust them anymore either. Most importantly for us, the suit called Tosfukata in Kings County, which is adjudicated by Mike Brady of Metal Apart, that suit goes directly to the heart of the facts that the building in the Central Valley that they have proposed and now funded is against the voters' wishes, as expressed in Proposition 1A. The Attorney General, we actually took that lawsuit, two copies of it, one if the Senate voted yes and one if the Senate didn't vote yes, to Sacramento on July 6th, and ended up sitting up in the gallery for two and a half hours waiting on the vote to come. But the Attorney General has till July 26th to respond to that amended suit and prepare what's called the demur. Now, you may remember that when I briefed you last month, the judge set aside the suit because it was not ripe for adjudication, that is, it wasn't ready to go to court, because although it only spent $540 million at that point, there was no money spent, you know, construction. So now, in theory, the case is ripe for adjudication, although I have seen enough corruption in the last two and a half years of four to five trips to Sacramento to say, "All bets are off in that situation." That system up there is, and it's my party, it's very corrupt, very, very corrupt. So we continue our work preparing documents for the General Accountability Office of the United States Government and for the United States, excuse me, House of Representatives Committee on Government Oversight and Reform. Both of them have teams. The GAO team is now eight persons. There are four persons in the Oversight Committee's team. The Oversight Committee is directed solely at the issue of conflict of interest in the California High-Speed Rail Project. GAO's writ is much broader. In closing, let me say that I have counseled my colleagues in the opposition that there will be no more federal money of any size coming at this project, and I've also counseled them that the authority and the Governor know that. And all they're doing is pretending that they can take the money that was dedicated to Proposition 1A, high-speed rail, and use it to pay off their friends in the transit agencies. Net effect of that will be twofold. It will destroy communities like Atherton, because they will, and they have permission to build four tracks. And secondly, no matter how much they spend on Caltrain, they could pay the rails a gold, they could make the locomotives a platinum. It doesn't solve their underlying problem. Caltrain does not have a capital deficit, it has an operating deficit. You still subsidize half of every ticket that is purchased, or you subsidize half the operating and maintenance costs. And that subsidy is for less than 1% of the combined populations of San Mateo, Santa Clara, and San Francisco County, and you only paid the CEO of Caltrain $365,000 last year to once again run out of budget. Questions? You're paying $420,000 a year before. Mike scan. Mike scan. Questions? Mike, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comments?
I hadn't come tonight for this, but I just left a reception where a former mayor of Palo Alto was there and current member of the City Council. And I said to him, "I hope you guys in Palo Alto are going to keep up the fight," and he said, "It's over." He said, "It's basically over now. They voted, they're funding, it's over."
He's wrong.
Well, I hope he is wrong, because I'll talk to him again, because I think we have to keep fighting this. We have to. It is utterly insane.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Any questions on the City Manager's Report? Do you want to make a comment on it? Normally you don't. If you say, "Well, you've seen it."
As you know, the San Mateo County mosquito and vector control district had an embezzlement incident. So today, that actually triggered a sphere of influence and municipal service review by the local agency formation commission. Today, they held their meeting. With regards, I attended that meeting along with Sam Lerner, who's our Atherton trustee for the district. With regards to the sphere of influence, the commission voted six to one against dissolution and continuing status quo.
Who voted for it?
Everybody voted for it except for Linda Craig, who's the public member. With regard to the municipal review, the commission had some recommendations, which they'll formalize in writing, but those recommendations include monthly financial reporting to each governing body, human resource consulting, and having an accountant do monthly checks on internal controls. So those will be memorialized in writing, and we'll probably get those within a month or two.
So the accounting checks, is that essentially going to be an audit function?
It sounds like what they're going to do is a continuous audit.
Okay.
And previously, they were doing a annual audit.
All right, okay. Questions? Anything new with the waste people?
There is not. They're still pending their review of the accusations. We've got no update yet. We expect to have something by August.
I liked your comments in your report about recognizing the work the staff has done. And I would like to add my personal appreciation to the staff who've stepped up and shown the flexibility and willingness and professional qualifications to assist you. The park event procedures that you talked about in here seem to be kind of in a limbo state right now. Is there a plan to, will come forth sometime in the future?
We're still meeting periodically, just to fix any discrepancies or anything that we have with the guidelines.
I guess until there's a library decision, it's probably premature to
Yes.
Take any actions.
Final advice, yes.
Okay. The exchanging of the STP funds for SLLP funds ended with a net result of $43,000 more in revenues. Is that anticipated in the budget, or is that over and above what was in the budget?
It was not anticipated. This will be over and above. And in fact, as we stay in here, what we need to do is bring a resolution for council approval. Staff will be doing that and bringing it forward after August meeting, and at the same time, we'll be updating CIP program, because as a result of this, we do need to ship some funding around in order to do this.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And finally, on the 25th, when we have a special meeting, is there not also a planning commission meeting that night?
Yes, the planning.
And we'll be taking up Little League here, I guess, and they'll be taking up Little League there. Is that right?
The planning commission meeting has been moved to 7:00 PM at the main house. Our meeting begins at 4:00 PM. I don't know that the Little League is on the planning and commission agenda for this month.
Okay. No, it was on last month.
It was on last month, but I'd have to double check what planning will cover.
Then the meeting is on its current date because the chairman of that commission didn't want to even address moving it.
So our meeting starts at 4:00?
4:00 PM.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Any other question?
I'll just second what Councilmember Carlson said in reading the staff report. Thank you so much for recognizing the staff, and, you know, I wanted to also give my thanks for all the good work everybody's been doing. I've said before that I think that our financial, accounting, and reports have been, you know, outstanding, and it looks like with the Building Department of Public Works, everything is on track and progressing really well. So thank you very much, Mike. And did we endeavor, yes. Did you want to make an announcement about the swearing-in of Chief Flint?
Yeah, thank you. Yesterday, the mayors and along with the vice mayors were in Chief Flint, who was officially reinstated from Calpers on Monday afternoon. So we had to await final authorization from Calpers before the chief can actually sign the contract, which he did after we had to take him to lunch.
It's a march, I see.
It's official.
And we did a press release, but not, the media hadn't covered it yet, but I'm sure it's going to be in there.
The Daily Post did.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome. Just wanted to make sure we acknowledged your public opinion.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is items eight through 18, and any council member and then the public will have an opportunity to pull any of these items they would like. I challenge anyone to try and take a number 11 off, but that's a challenge we'll have out there. So does anybody want to pull any items?
I just have questions, 12, 13, 15, and 17.
12, 13, 15, and 17. Okay, Elizabeth?
I have a question about number 14, actually.
Okay. And I've got some, I'd like to discuss 15. So
Consent calendar has been
So is there anybody in the audience that would like to pull any of the items?
13.
13, okay. Okay. So Jerry, do you want to ask your questions on 12 and 17?
Yes, thank you. On item 12 deals with the Professional Services Agreement for Property Tax Consulting and Audit Services. My questions are, the scope of services, will this be looking at all of the property tax elements that the household receives? And the number of items on that statement, the school districts, the county library system, mosquito district, and so forth, will I be looking at all of those elements?
No. No, they'll be looking at the taxes that are due to the city or the town of Atherton. So it doesn't include any special districts. It doesn't include the fire district or the school district.
What about the library district?
The library portion that comes to the city, we talked about, I talked with the consultants, and they will assist us with auditing that portion. And the special parcel tax, they will do auditing on that tax rule as well. But we won't be auditing any other special district taxes.
Okay. This came up as part of the Finance Committee.
Right, yeah, I think it's a good idea. I just thought maybe it would be interesting, I don't know what I would do with it necessarily, but to know how much the town residents pay to each of the elementary school districts, for example, like Redwood City School District, where there's not one, not many children using the district. On page six, towns use of the firm's web-based software. What are the expected uses and the value to be derived from that software?
In many cases, the cities that utilize that have a lot of development activity, and so you can access, in some ways, it keeps a record of any changes to parcels and changes to, with respect to annexations. We don't have a lot of that activity, but it does also keep track of assessed value information on improvements to property, which could be useful near.
Is this part of the charge? I mean, this is, software is not an extra charge, is it?
No, it's part of the service. They have a very complex database that they've developed over 20 years, and we have access to that that has to do with Atherton properties. They do monthly or quarterly reporting for us of any changes and any audit findings that they find throughout the period of time.
I found it intriguing that we'll get a list of the 13 parcels.
Yes, that'll be helpful.
Is there any kind of an estimate that they gave you as to what we can expect maybe in overall gain for investment here?
No, and I'm very interested in maybe having our first meeting with them to get a guess from them. But I do believe it will be successful because the jurisdictions that border Atherton have not engaged this specific firm, and a big part of what they find is misallocations between jurisdictions. So they'll check all of the boundaries of the town and make sure all the parcels are in the proper jurisdiction, and so it's quite possible they'll find some things.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. And then you had questions on 17 as well.
Okay. Yeah, 17 is the ordinance establishing a city manager's position description. Two quick questions here. One of them is on page four, item G, at the top of the page, there's a long line after agencies, after a colon there. Just, is it there for some particular purpose, or what's the?
No, it looks like the track change is just
Okay. Okay, the more substantive question is, has to deal with, on page five, the City Council, City Manager Relations. And it talks about the city manager shall take his or her direction from the City Council only during meetings of the City Council. There've been instances in the past where, I would say frequent instances, where individual council members voiced a desire for some information or given some direction, in quotes, as to what they think should be done, when oftentimes, the whole council's not been involved in this. So I wanted to ask you, acting city manager, how do you interpret this and intend to implement this?
I've always taken an approach to allow council members to come into my office and not necessarily take direction, but give me suggestions. And as indicated in a lot of my emails to you, I also always welcome your suggestions. If I like the suggestions, I'll go back to full council and ask for that direction.
But this says, "Direction from the City Council only during meetings of the City Council."
Which is when I'll go back to City Council under my city manager's written report, I'll ask for direction from the rest of you.
Mr. Carlson, as the drafter, I can explain the language. The language is very clear. It explains the current state of the law in California in general law cities. And the law is very clear, that no one council member could come in and tell the city manager she has to do something. Hence the word "direct." Now, they come in and ask questions and say, "I'd like to see this on an agenda." If the city manager agrees, it will be on the agenda. If the city manager disagrees, it won't be on the agenda unless there's another vehicle for putting it there, colleagues, memo, that sort of thing. This is really talking about during a City Council meeting, if somebody brings up something, especially under council member comments or discussion, and says, for instance, "I think we should have a symposium on high-speed rail." It's not on the agenda, so we can't agendize it. But they could direct the city manager, for instance, by a vote, to do something in the way of setting up the symposium. Now, would that come, would an individual director know? But the concept is that at a meeting where everybody's sitting here, if the item is put out there, you know, it's very common for a mayor or council member to say, you know, gee, I'd like the city manager to do something. And if the others go, "Yeah, that's a good idea," then by consensus, the city manager has direction.
Okay. So you're looking for a majority consensus?
Correct.
Okay. I want to make sure.
Does that have to happen in a meeting? Could the city manager put something out and say, "Respond to me," and if three council members ask?
No, that violates the Brown Act.
But I have taken suggestions from council members individually. For instance, these curtains, they were the suggestion from the council members. So I put them into a city manager's written report, it's within my spending authority. So if you guys have any concerns with what I'm going to do, let me know.
There isn't any substantial change, to be honest with you.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to have a little discussion on it.
This is codifying what we do today and making it a little bit more modern than what's
Because I've heard each of us say, "Ask for something." So I wasn't sure whether you count the nodding heads or
And actually, technically, you can still ask for anything, but you can't direct the city manager to do something.
Okay.
And that's a distinction that's important, actually.
Any other questions?
No, none of that.
Okay. So that says, 15 was your other question, but we're going to discuss that. We're going to pull 13. So, yes, why don't we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, which would be items eight, nine, 10. 11 is blank. 12.
Through the chair. I think Councilmember or Vice Mayor Lewis had a question on 14.
I just have a question.
Oh, I thought you pulled it, sorry. Apologies.
I just have a question. I just want to ask the public works director about this completion. Is this include the work that was done on Park Lane?
No. This is actually, what this contract is, is prior to the actual microslurry in the Cape Seale that was done recently. What precedes that is basically going out and digging out all the bailed areas and patching it before the slurries go over. So this was a separate contract.
That's a separate one, okay. My comment is, having to do, maybe I'll take it offline and talk to you about the Park Lane and the Alhambra.
There were several complaints about Park Lane, and there was also about Holbrook Lane.
And Alhambra. I mean, there was debris that was left, I mean, like a crushed sign, A-frame sign with wire, you know.
That'll be on a future agenda, right?
Yes, well, anyway, so I'm fine with it.
Well, those complaints went to the city, some of those complaints went to the city manager, and I think
I just wanted to make sure that this one, that we didn't
This isn't that.
Okay, it's okay.
So include 14 on your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes, everything except for 13 and 15. So items eight through 18.
I still move?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's pull up item number 13. So that was pulled by a member of the audience, and Jerry, you had some questions on it, so why don't you start?
The scope of this, this is the Professional Services Agreement relating to fee schedule. Scope of this includes all city fees except for the park fees?
All user fees. All things that are determined to be user fees, yes.
Or development fees. Okay.
For instance, not things like renting the space in the park.
Right. I was going to ask a question. When will we be revealing those fees in the park?
We haven't set a date for that, but I do believe the information that we get out of this, the cost allocation and the hourly rates, the fully burdened hourly rates, will allow us to determine what our full cost of those services are, and then we can bring back to council. You know, sometimes those types of community service fees are looked at based on surveying other jurisdictions and how much the city wants to possibly contribute towards those costs. So we can bring back a recommendation for that.
So in the workshop, number one, where they're going to spend two or three hours a couple of times with departments, is the purpose of that to try and develop an hourly rate for employees?
It's a very complex It's a very complex model that is used to develop these types of cost allocations and fees. And so the first step is to go through and find out what everybody does and how much time they're spending on the different tasks, and then you find out the quantities of the tasks, so that you can put together a matrix and figure out what the total cost is for the, for the town of providing services. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
One of the things we got kind of hung upon last time around doing this was the, what items are, should be billable, what items should not be billable. For example, educating the residents on a particular item, or I think, can't think of any other examples right now, but is that going to be part of the analysis here, so that when you bring it to the council, you have gone through that, that analysis?
Thank you, council member, for bringing up the last study. In my research, I did see that there were quite a few, I'll call it change orders and workshops going through the fee study. And so it will be my objective to make sure that we tap into that past history as we're developing the scope for this work, so we don't make the same, all same mistakes or, you know, interpretations.
On page 17, talks about a comparison of five different fees for each department with benchmark cities. Couple of questions here, whose lexis cities ensures the scope of service provided is comparable? I guess, along with that, explain how the pricing of specific development projects will work for making fee comparisons.
Pricing of certain development projects?
Yeah, it, it says in the text on page 17, "pricing the specific development projects," and then coming up with comparables that they can take a look at, I guess, is what other cities are doing. I didn't understand exactly what that.
That's, that's, I think, speaking to jurisdictions that do have larger projects, you know, maybe developing large complexes or shopping centers or things like that.
So this is border plate type of terminology here then, that they've provided us?
Say that again?
This is more of a border plate terminology or document that they've provided us, rather than specifically for Atherton?
I believe it's, it's considering things outside of Atherton of what they would be able to do, yes. So they are speaking to different types of develop, commercial developments.
Okay.
And they can be unique, so they're comparing to other jurisdictions, and you're right, that's not applicable to us here.
Apparently, there are two council meetings that are included in this fee. What will we be presented at the first council meeting? How far will they have gotten in terms of coming up with, with results and so forth? Will they, will they have, will they have specific rates or fees to propose at that time? Will they be talking about their methodology they're going to use, or what part of the process will be seen in the first time?
I would imagine that staff has vetted through the entire process, and we would come to you with some recommendations during the first meeting. If we came across issues where we needed policy decisions to be made or confirmed based on staff's work, then we would come to you with that. But I would expect that we would come to you with a recommendation on fees and how we develop them.
Okay, thank you.
So Deborah, have you used this firm before?
You know, it's very interesting, in the area of cost allocation and developing fees, there's a core group of professionals that have been experts in this for the last over 10 years, and I've worked with several of them, and the firms have changed over time. A firm named Maximus used to be a leader in it, also Muni Financial, and those firms have since kind of morphed into different firms. The people that are in this proposal came from Maximus, the original DMG firm, I mean, people that have been around for a long time. The people that are going to be working on our project are, are experts in this area. But to say that we've worked with this firm, I've worked with this firm, I have not. I did check references, and the people that are going to be on this project are very highly regarded. You want to find a balance of somebody that is very technical but doesn't overburden the process. In some places, you go and it becomes this endless model that really never gets completed. And in some of the reference check, reference checks I did, you know, they said, "Well, it's taken longer than we wanted, but it's really our fault." So in some cases, they're requiring a lot of data from the city, which is time-consuming for us to go through and provide. And so I think this firm will be a very good balance for us to come up with a model that we can support, is going to, you know, be supported by all the live data that we have, but they'll be able to work with us quickly to get to where we need to be without getting caught up in all the details.
So we, we went through a very tedious, long, arduous cost allocation study in 2009, and it, we have a member of the public who I am, I'm sure wants to speak on this, and it really, most of it focused on, well, it came down to the building department fees, contracting fees, public work fees, and is that since we've outsourced all of those disciplines and our contracts with the outsourcing companies as like a cost of profit margin, you know, model, so why are we going to go through this at this point? What other fees can we really be looking at? Because everything seems to be outsourced. I, I'm a little confused at what we would be.
Well, the law requires that we do charge fees that are not in excess of our costs. And so we do know that we have costs that are through the contracts plus through the regular city, I'll say the cost allocation process. And so we do need to just go and reaffirm, you know, we have had a reorganization in the town, so it's time for us to go and reaffirm that our fees are, are within the range that can be supported. And it's also helpful to go through this process and just, from a, a public viewpoint, do some surveying and see where we fall to find out how efficient we are. You know, you're not supposed to be benchmarking your fees anymore, you really have to support it with costs, but it shows whether you're efficient or not if you're comparing yourself to other jurisdictions in some ways.
But with the outsourcing, it seems like the, the efficient-